Excuse me, good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the November 1st, 2018 public hearing on the 2019 budget. First, we'll call the order. First item of business is Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mike, are we all checked in? Thank you. So, before we move on to Item 4, which is a call for public comment, I want to welcome everybody to our meeting. This is a great time to come in and voice your opinion on the budget, to see how county government works, and especially, I'd like to extend a welcome to the Leadership Macomb Junior Program, who is with us today. Would you mind standing, the Leadership Macomb Junior Program kids? Did they leave? What the heck happened? Oh, where did they go? Okay, we're gonna bring them back in. I'm gonna hold on a minute. I don't know why they moved to next door. They're trying to learn how government works. They shouldn't be next door. No, oh, no, you're supposed to be in here. No, yeah, come on back. Yeah, I'm not sure why everybody left. Yes, Leadership Macomb, come on in. I'm gonna embarrass you individually, in front of everybody. Okay, good. Yes. It's easier to see how government works when you're in the room. Great. So, I guess we don't have to ask you to stand, Leadership Macomb's Junior Program. These are all students involved in the program. They're in their junior year of high school, and similar to the Leadership Macomb Core Problem or Program, the Junior Program focuses on educating the participants about Macomb County, its assets, the economics, business climates, and the systems of oversight. So, I'm really glad you guys are here, and all of you are here today. As far as this meeting goes, the Board of Commissioners is a legislative branch of the county government, and we're charged with providing financial oversight of county funds. All of our meetings are open to the public, and we welcome citizen engagement. Today, we have a public hearing on the budget that was recommended from the Executive. We have a full board meeting afterwards to discuss that budget and some possible amendments, and then that will be forwarded to next week's full board meeting to vote for a final budget. Over the last couple of months, this body has received and questioned and investigated information from the Finance Department and all the departments as best we can that were contained in the recommended budget. Departments have come before us to answer questions and describe their programs and what services they provide to the residents of our county. Public hearing gives the citizens a chance to put their input on our recommended budget. And I'm thinking maybe one or two of you might be here for that purpose. After this meeting, we're gonna make a recommendation to consider adopting a budget with possible amendments at next week's Thursday, November 8th, full board meeting. I encourage you to participate and engage with your local representatives, and thanks for being here today. So, this is how we normally run this. It's like public participation. You'll have up to five minutes to speak to an item that's on the agenda, which is basically the 2018 or 19 recommended budget. All of you have the absolute right to get up here and speak. I will just ask that if the three people before you have said the same exact thing that you're gonna say, just tighten it up a little bit. I have a pretty good feeling, as do most of us, why most of you are here. I'm gonna call for public comment. Please come up, give us your name and address, and you'll have five minutes. So, do I see a member from the public wishing to speak? I'm not gonna, I guess I'll pick. So, we can start there. Ms. West, come to the microphone, give us your name and address, and I'll call on you as you go. You'll all get your opportunity.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Smith.
Yes.
My name is Joey West. I'm a resident of Clinton Township. Do you want the actual address?
You can give us, yes, your address.
Okay, 20752 Aldo Court.
Thank you.
Clinton Township. I'm here on behalf of Michigan State University Extension, and I have been not only affiliated with MSUE for a number of years, but I've been on the Macomb County Leadership Council and also the statewide Leadership Council. I think it's important for people to understand exactly what MSU Extension is. Lot of people don't know. When I talk to people, they say, "Oh, is that the building on Woodward in Detroit?" No, it's not. It's not what they do. MSU is the pioneer land-grant college in the United States. It was started when Justin Morrell and Abraham Lincoln decided they wanted to see more higher education throughout the US. So, they developed the land-grant college program. There is a land-grant college in every single solitary state, and one of the missions of the land-grant college was to, once you are up and running as a university, we want you to bring knowledge to life and put an office in every single county, which we have with MSU, put an office in every single county so that you can help bring knowledge to life. They want you to have programs that are right into each of the different areas in the county. Michigan State University's Macomb County Extension has been around for 100 years. We just celebrate our 100th anniversary while you all are celebrating your 200. We have a wide array of programs, and we have partners with a number of different groups in the county. In Macomb Intermediate School District, we have programs with every single school district, and we really work hard with churches, outreach, community outreach, et cetera. Some of the programs that we have that are very, very important, youth development. So, not only do we do youth development, everybody hears 4H, and what do you think of when you think of 4H? You think of hogs and horses, blue ribbons and all that. No, the 4H stands for head, heart, health, and hand. It is the oldest leadership program in the world, not in Michigan, in the world. So, it's a huge program, and it helps take youth, especially when you have maybe disadvantaged youth, and teach them more about how you can become a leader and how you can help people. Other programs are natural resources programs and our Sea Grant. We have food and nutrition and wellness, which is in a lot of the schools, and we also work with those schools on breakfast programs, et cetera. Community food systems and safety, consumer health food programs like Master Gardener. Master Gardener reaches out to so many people and helps so many people. I was just talking with a gentleman yesterday who said they contacted MSU with the whole ash bore program and problem, and he was able to save a couple of his trees, mainly because of MSU. And then also, if you look at in 2016, when Clinton Township and Frazier had that big hole in the middle of 15 Mile, which we call Sinkhole, it was MSU Extension that jumped, jumped, and went in and started educating schools on water conservation and what you need to do. Each one of those cute little kids in the school know that you don't just turn the water on, you try to get the water right away and how to not always flush the toilet a lot. Anyway, and I think our biggest one, and I know there's a lot of people here who want to speak to this, is financial literacy. Back when Mr. Wabi was here, he and Jerry Moffett made it mandatory that anybody who had a foreclosure on their home would go to MSU Extension and go through their financial literacy program so they could save their home. And it was MSU Extension that really brought that Step Forward program, worked with Mishda in that Step Forward program. Time.
Thank you.
Time.
Thank you, Ms. West.
Okay, thank you.
So, just to, no, you're fine. Just to make things official, I'm gonna ask for a motion to open the public hearing all while taking Ms. West's comment into the meeting. So, I have a motion from Commissioner Carabelli, supported by Commissioner Kleinfeld. Can we get a?
Do I get to start again, Mr. Smith? Because I won't be as nervous this time. What was it? Oh, darn it all. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. West.
And thank you for considering, your consideration.
Please vote. We have 13 of us? Good. Motion passes 13 to 0. Next, sir, come on up.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Thank you for allowing me to speak at today's hearing. I'm also here on behalf of the Michigan State Extension Center. My name is Dave Putt. I have been a homeowner and resident of Macomb County for 35 years. I am a graduate and/or a trained volunteer of several of the MSU Extension programs, including the Master Gardener Program, the Great Lakes Education Program, the Michigan Conservation Steward Program, and the Master Composter Program. I devote approximately 200 hours of my time as a volunteer towards these programs every year. This is the equivalent of one month's work at a full-time job. I do this because I believe that all of these programs are essential in cultivating the habits of healthy living and sustainable practices among the diverse community of children, adults, and families that reside in Macomb County. If these were programs and hands-on activities that were already available to our elementary, middle school, junior high, and high school students and adult members of our community, I would not be here today. But they are not. Through these programs, we are delivering a body of knowledge and practical experiences that are not available elsewhere. I cannot imagine a Macomb County without having these programs available to our residents. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Sir, I know you had your hand up early on, but if you, you're next, yes, please.
My name is John Lawrence.
You'll all get your opportunity.
I live at 33700 Jefferson and Saint Clair Shores. I'm just here on behalf of Michigan State Extension. My wife and I are active in the Great Lakes Education Program and water conservation presentations that are made in the area schools. We've been doing that for five or six years. I particularly want to take the tack of why early childhood experience in science and the study of water are important. For young learners, science is just an extension of their everyday world. We don't have to teach young children how to wonder, discover, explore through play. They do it naturally. The myth is that we have to convince children that science is fun. Science is always fun for children if it's presented properly. Research shows that most children have an opinion, either positive or negative, about science by the time they reach the age of seven. When people say they don't enjoy science, they don't like science, it's because they've had a bad experience with science as a child. And it's experience, it's that experience that shaped their opinion that lasts for a lifetime. On the flip side, children with wonderful, exciting experiences are excited about science. Personally, I know the trajectory of my life was changed forever when I had a teacher in high school who had an after-school computer club. For those of us who live in the Great Lakes Basin, we have a unique opportunity and responsibility with 20% of the world's fresh surface water, 90% of the fresh surface water in North America. But it's not unlimited, needs to be concerned. We have contamination issues, we have aquatic invasive species issues. I'm here today to state my support for both the GLEP program and water conservation programs authored through Michigan State Extension. I know these are time and resources well spent. It's a very unique educational experience. When we go out on the boat, I'm always amazed that for some children, that's their first experience on a boat, that's the first time on the Clinton River, that's the first time on Lake Saint Clair. We perform real science, collect real data that will be studied by marine biologists monitoring the water quality of the Clinton River and Lake Saint Clair. The water conservation presentation is given to local second graders for an hour. They're informed and entertained about water, the water cycle, and how to be good stewards of this precious resource. In my opinion, the presentations hit the sweet spot of saying something important and keeping the delivery fun. In education circles, it's said that a lesson is successful if the topic makes it home to the family dinner table. I know that after every water conservation presentation or GLEP outing on the water, the students go home with both answers and a head full of questions. Since most of the effort in these programs is performed by volunteers, I think Michigan State Extension provides a lot of bang for the buck. I've met many of the volunteers. They are exceptional people who care deeply about water, water quality, water conservation, and education in our youth. So, whoever makes a decision about the future of the activities led by Michigan State Extension, if you have a better way to reach more children and give a better educational experience, I'm all for it. But if the decision is to discontinue the efforts of Michigan State Extension in Macomb County and leave a hole in the education of our students and deny them the opportunity of an amazing science experience, then I would suggest that such a decision is very short-sighted and is very detrimental to the students and to our community. Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. How are you guys doing today? My name is Councilwoman Monique Owens from East Point, and today I am here to speak on behalf of Michigan State University Extension in a 4H program. Now, I don't know the 100 years of history that follows 4H, so I'm not gonna stand here and read a whole bunch of stuff to you today, but I am gonna tell you about the history of 4H and what it has done for me. I grew up, single-parent home in Detroit, Michigan, and it was a 4H over there on McCullin and Grashit. It did wonders for the community. I mean, wonders. It helped single moms be able to afford, to put their kids into something that was probably not affordable if they put a high price on it. And today, I am a resigned Wayne County Sheriff for 11 years. I was elected last year as the first African-American Councilwoman of East Point, and I owe all that to 4H programs. And if you take the funding away from that, I don't know what to say about you guys. I really don't know what to say. You guys are elected officials. You study the Robert's Rules, just like we teach in 4H program. So, the same things you're learning at 30, 40 years old, these kids are learning at five years old. So, how dare you take that away from these kids? And then, we're trying to fight the opioid crisis, so how do we fight that and take programs from our community? How do you do both? How does that equal out? You can't do both. Something is not gonna equal out. Kids, if you take the program from the kids, lessen these programs, I mean, it's gonna take them to somewhere else. Then, we're trying to find funds to fund the opioid crisis. Then, we're trying to find funds to fund the people, these young kids that are in juvenile jails. How does it equal out? I just started a 4H program. Actually, I've been working on it for the last couple of months, and then we just started two weeks ago in East Point. We don't have any programs in East Point. I just had to start it. I'm already elected official, a mom of two. I am so busy that I took time out to make sure these kids have something to do. That's our job. We want these future kids out in the audience to be better, to vote. We teach them how to vote and teach them how to do these things, but then we don't raise them into learning how to do these things. And I'm just putting these in the hands of you guys. These are our future voters. This is our future, and we're taking these programs away for roads? Are you serious? For roads. Every time we do a budget for the city council, either we have a choice to use our funds for charities, or we can put it in our streets. And being a first-time elected official, I use all our money, the little hundred and something thousand dollars, to fund these shelters. I'd rather see people in a shelter than trying to pay for a street that they're gonna end up laying on anyway. We are elected officials. It's our duty to do the right thing. We shouldn't have to be even discussing taking away funds for children and putting it in streets that's gonna get messed up in a couple of months anyway. So, I just wanted to stand here. I took time out. I can't stay all day, because as you know, I'm very busy. But I'm not that busy where I cannot stop and say, "We need to do something for these children." And I hope you guys agree with me. Like I said, I am a 4H-er. I did it at 10 years old. I am 34 years old right now. And so, if I can do it, what's that, 24 years later, and start one on my own, it must be beneficial. My kids can't wait for the next program. So, I ask you to rethink it if you have never heard of 4H, if you don't know anybody that has been in it. You got an elected official in front of you that's telling you that I've been part of 4H and what it's done for me and what it has. I'm a history maker. We got future history makers out here. This is our future. So, you're gonna base your future on roads? So, please, because I know some of you guys, election is coming up for you guys, and it's gonna come up in a couple more years, and these are our future voters.
Ma'am, you have 30 seconds.
Okay, I'm all done. So, thank you so much.
Thanks.
Because it's raining, and I have to go, but please, if you're gonna amend something, I would say add more money to it than take money away from it. Thank you.
Thank you. And just, there's a, there's kind of a little line forming over there. I know that all of you can't stand in line, but if you want to, there's a little line forming, and I didn't start it, but it might be a good idea to use that. Also, for those of you students that don't understand this process, we as board members can't respond in this type of a comment situation. So, there can be questions asked of us, but we can't respond to you. So, thank you. Ma'am, welcome.
Good afternoon. My name is Julie Champion. I work with, here on, well, I live in Mount Clemmons, 190 Boulain, right in Mount Clemmons. I work with here on Clinton Metro Parks, and as you can see, there's a lot of passion here about what, the other reason I'm here is to speak about continuing funding for MSU Extension. The Metro Parks has worked many, many years with collaborative programming, programs that we couldn't do if we didn't have that relationship. And I guess because you've heard a lot of the other ones, I focus on probably the biggest one that we are involved with at Lake Saint Clair Metro Park and the Nature Center is our Great Lakes Education Program and our summer discovery cruises. And our goal and our mission with that, with Michigan Sea Grant, as well as what our Nature Center goal is, is to help people understand the Great Lakes, our marshes, our wetlands, water quality, invasive species, all the things that we're teaching. A gentleman mentioned a lot of the things that we teach out there. We do a collaborative program with them with, we've been doing it for 28 years. I started with them kind of at the base of establishing the curriculum and kind of steering committee of starting the whole program. And so far, we've gone, I had to ask real quick, but I think it was 65,000 students. Our participants have gone through the Great Lakes Education Program. Kind of us mushroomed out of that program was our public program we do in the summer, which is open to the public to come out, families to come out, and we get them out on Lake Saint Clair on the boat. We're again teaching about our natural history, our cultural history, and how important that lake is, and again, water, water quality, things that are important with our blue economy that we're always talking about with Macomb County. So, one reason I'm here to help support continuing funding for that program. It's a continuing program that we get. We also, after going on those programs, we get a lot of people that return to the park and want to participate in other programs as well. So, I'm hoping it will continue to be funded.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Thank you for having me, Commissioners. My name is Jean Persley. I'm at 73881 Omo Road in Armada, Michigan. I've been a Master Gardener volunteer since 2004. I'm also an advanced Master Gardener and Master Composter. When I first enrolled in the Master Gardener Program, I thought I would take the program, maybe volunteer for a few hours, and move on to my next adventure. What I was not prepared for was a literal life-changing experience that I have been blessed with. Since then, I have personally provided Macomb County with 4,325 hours of recorded volunteer work. At the current IRS volunteer rate of 2469 per hour, that is a value of $106,000. I have spent 563 hours on continuing education. Since 2004, I have driven 14,285 miles, most of that here in Macomb County as a Master Gardener. Overall, in Macomb County, our impact for the Master Gardener Program in 2017 was 248 Master Gardeners doing the exact same thing that I'm doing, 69 new trainees. We volunteered 14,127 hours in 2017 alone as Master Gardeners. Our continuing education hours were 3,557. Cumulatively, all the Master Gardeners drove 75,676 miles, and we've served over 209,000 of your constituents here in Macomb County. Even Commissioner Drolle has received advice from myself as a Master Gardener regarding his failing Pin Oak tree that was planted wrong plant, wrong place, and he received advice on how to correctly get a soil sample testing done through MSU Extension. So, I hope your Pin Oak is doing very well or has been replaced, Commissioner. Thank you. I have learned about my impacts on water quality, native plants, composting, managing my septic system, how to utilize integrated pest management, taking the Centers in Planner Course, and so much more. Master Gardeners are more than just gardeners. We provide research-based, peer-reviewed science to our communities. Anyone can garden, but as we know, not everybody does so successfully. That's why we are here, is to help everybody in Macomb County. Recently, the Macomb MSU Extension celebrated 100 years. 100 years. An organization does not stick around for 100 years without having meaningful impacts on the community and a proven track record. Projects that I have personally been involved with and held leadership positions in is the Junior Master Gardener Program, which was the only one in Macomb County at Atwood Elementary at the Lance Cruz School District, which was Commissioner Drolle's district. Food gardens, hundreds of pounds of fresh produce were donated to area food pantries to help feed the hungry. We had pollinator gardens, native plant gardens. We composted with the kids. I educated personally hundreds of children and their families in various environmental areas. The Macomb Food Collaborative is a program that I helped initiate here in Macomb County. It's a local food education conference, supporting local farmers and local food businesses. I also sit on the Macomb Extension Leadership Council. It's an advisory and advocacy group that supports Macomb Extension. Some of these people are here because of things I've sent out. The April Millsap Memorial Garden sits along the Macomb Orchard Trail in Armada. I've also had contact with other Commissioners regarding this. In April of 2018, all of you chose the April Millsap Memorial Garden to support as a Casual Friday program. You all, as Commissioners, are supporting MSU Extension already, and we appreciate that. Because of that Casual Friday program, we received over $1,200 from Macomb County employees who donated funds towards funding a memorial scholarship. Because of the generous donations of the Macomb County employees, we were able to award two $500 scholarships to April Millsap's graduating class. The April Millsap Memorial Garden is a nationally certified wildlife habitat and monarch weigh station that provides a welcoming view into the Village of Armada, a rest spot for the users of the Macomb Orchard Trail, and a healing spot for the community and visitors to the garden. Our family is not personally from here in Michigan. We were transplanted here by Uncle Sam. When we decided to stay in Michigan, moving out of Macomb County was not an option I considered. I stayed here in Macomb because of my ties to MSU Macomb.
Ma'am, you have 30 seconds.
Thank you. Our family decided to make Macomb our home. I'd like to just leave you with 14,285 miles that I have driven and $106,000 worth of volunteer work that I have provided. Thank you all for supporting a Master Gardener project, and I hope that you continue to support MSU Extension Macomb. Thank you all.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. I'm Michelle Porter. My residence is 240 Minot Street in Romeo, and I also am a land and business owner at 78695 K-Pac Road in Armada. I am also here to advocate for Michigan State University Extension. I've been a Master Gardener for eight years and a 4H volunteer and parent for 10 years. As part of the Master Gardener Program with Jane's help, in 2013, we established the Macomb County Master Gardener Association. That organization allowed Macomb County Master Gardeners to connect and network with other Master Gardeners throughout the state. We shared educational tips and networking opportunities. As of 2018, in order to maintain your volunteer status and your certification, we're required to complete 20 volunteer hours and 10 education hours annually. Now, my lifetime contribution to Jane's numbers are 254 hours of volunteer time, 92 hours of education, and I'm 92 hours of education, and I've also driven 2,220 miles, mostly within Macomb County. My primary passion and one of the other programs that you've heard about already is 4-H. We were founded in 1902, the oldest youth organization in the world. And I did collect some preliminary data for you. In 2017-18, the enrollment program touched 489 family units. Those units might be made up of leaders and volunteers, parents, and youth. So 489 seems low, but realize that those are multiples because of the parents and youth involved, including siblings. In terms of participation, the program is still growing. It's not on the decline. In 2016, for individual program participation counts, we had 1,921 youth. In 2017, it grew to 6,713. And in 2018, still counting, we're at 5,276. This is an experiential learning program for youth ages 5 to 19. And as the first speaker noted, it's more than just the traditional rural agricultural opportunities that you've heard about. We touch STEAM, the Science, Technology, Engineering, Arts, and Math Programs. We do mentoring, resume writing, financial literacy, and leadership workshops. And I think the biggest win, and the thing that I want to emphasize, is the qualities of life that this touches on. Because it's not just a simple after-school program. 4-H and Master Gardening and all the other programs within MSUE really raise good, healthy citizens that have confidence, a knowledge and willingness to learn throughout their lifetime. They learn to collaborate, negotiate, communicate. They show a respect for life and for other people and responsibility. So in my mind and experience, the benefits to our communities in Macomb County outweigh the costs. And before you simply strike through the MSUE line item on the budget vote, I ask you to do your due diligence to examine the data and collect some anecdotal evidence that proves to you the benefits of the programs provided. MSUE is really a vital part of our districts and our county. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name is Julian Warren. I'm representing the current youth of MSU Extension. The organization itself as a whole has a huge impact on our county's youth. It provides an outlet for personal growth, learning new skills, and getting involved with our community. Personally, I've gained a ton from my time in 4-H. In my four years of membership, I've learned countless things. One thing I'd like to speak about is my learned skill of working with people. 4-H has challenged me with the task of knowing when to step up and be a leader within a group and when to listen and be a follower. It's taught me how to put ideas together with people you might not even agree with, how to get a task done successfully when working with other people. Now, where's the proof? How does it do this? I've been a teen counselor at our 4-H day camps for three years now. In these, the counselors must work with the children through learning activities and lesson plans, games and physical activities, and keeping things safe and orderly. We must work with one another to ensure these things get done successfully. In doing so, through practice and experience, the previous skills I listed are obtained. But not only do teens volunteering for camps benefit from it hugely, the children do as well. Each camp, there is a clear result that the majority of attendees have enlightened on a new, have been enlightened on a new subject. Whether it be gardening, environmental science, robotics, archery, or food health and nutrition, which are only some of the things we've covered, they are leaving learning something new. Not only that, but they are required to work together, work together as teams as well. This is just one opportunity it provides. At the Healthy Living Camp at MSU Campus, teen leaders come from all across Michigan to take sit in multiple lectures and activities educating us on health and food and exercise. Just another opportunity 4-H has provided for me and many more youth from our county. So see, the growing never stops. 4-H is an outlet for bettering our community. It has impacted so many lives, and there's never a time when 4-H wouldn't benefit us. Two 4-H clubs just started in my city, East Point, where I attend school and spend most of my time. There are not any outlets for leadership or community participation in East Point. These were the first. When word got out that 4-H was starting, people got excited. 4-H means something to people. So if you take this away, you're taking away a part of me and many others. Thank you.
Nice job, Julie. Next. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. I'm Elizabeth Karen Burke. My address is 2185532 Mile Road, Armada, Michigan. I grew up in Armada. 4-H saved my life. At a very young age, I went through a series of traumatic losses. I became depressed, introverted, and silently crying out for help. My parents signed me up for 4-H where I met one of my mentors. She nudged and prompted me to believe in myself again. Her generally pushing me and guiding me, guiding me ways that gave me courage to break out of my shell. She introduced me to all the wonderful things and opportunities that MSU Extension has to offer. They open doors to endless possibilities. Doors to art, communications, scholarships, inspirations, and college experiences. I met Liz Duran, who gave me a freedom to soar. Her confidence in me allowed me to inspire others. MSU Children's Programs enlightens young minds to achieve their dreams. These are people who care and help mold young people. Children, children need these programs to save them from destructive behavior. MSU Extension helps youth shape their futures. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Commissioner and Commissioners. I think what we're all hearing today is something in common. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm ready to go right.
There you go. Sorry. I understand.
I'm Linda Stout, 47595 Andrea Court in Shelby Township. I'm past president of the MSU Extension Leadership Council in Macomb County. Our president couldn't be here today. I'm still on the Leadership Council. I think what we're hearing today is that all these programs have something in common. They have a very positive economic impact on our county. And a lot of the programs work on prevention. We're trying to prevent problems before they happen, before they cost the county more money. And one of the examples, one of the programs I'm very familiar with is a foreclosure program. If you can't save a house, think of the terrible impact, economic impact it has on a family, on the neighborhood, and the county as a whole. So the foreclosure prevention program that MSU has really helps prevent and creates a very positive economic impact in our community. I'm not going to speak very much longer because behind me, there's two people from St. Pauli Tarsus who have some success stories. Now, foreclosure requires that they go through our financial literacy program. And this food bank at St. Pauli Tarsus started having the recipients of the food at their food bank start to go through this financial literacy program. And I'm going to let you hear from them how successful that was.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name is Christina Escalante, and I reside at 605 Wellington Crescent, right here in the city of Mount Clemens. I am a mom of three, and I serve as the School Board Secretary for the Mount Clemens School District as well. I mention that position not to speak on behalf of my board colleagues, but rather to say that being a volunteer of time and service often goes overlooked and underappreciated. But our purpose is not for recognition, and I'm sure a lot of you can relate to that. With that being said, I'm here today humbly asking you all not to cut MSU Extension from your 2019 budget. The budget would greatly affect the huge amount of volunteers that truly invest their own time in the lives of others on a daily basis. If we don't have the volunteers, then what does that mean for the children that so greatly benefit from these programs? In 2017 alone, 4-H reached over 8,000 people within this community. This means that children had something to look forward to that many may not have had otherwise. 4-H has a heavy presence right here in the heart of Mount Clemens. New clubs are opening. People are feeling inspired to give back to their community. And MSU Extension supports those efforts on so many levels. Speaking on behalf of my community right here in Mount Clemens, I can attest to the 80 children I had for my 4-H Spanish Club last year that without the support of MSU Extension, my club would have been extremely difficult to run. I never expected to have that many kids sign up, and they supported me through that so that I was able to run the club. They provided me with volunteers, supplies, activity, and just moral support in general. The hugs you get from the children alone are worth it all. I, along with our elementary school teacher, are hopeful to begin an art club this winter so that the kids can enter their projects into the Armada Fair and experience what that is about. Our children look forward to these clubs all around our county. For some, it's the only extracurricular activity that they have to look forward to. Some of these clubs, or some of these children go home to very difficult environments. I'm sorry, I lost my place. Some of these clubs keep them off of the streets. Having something to look forward to that is low in cost and affordable in the long run will help keep them from making poor decisions and ending up in negative situations. It gives them purpose, and it impacts their learning. If I had more time up here, I could give you personal stories of the positive impact MSU Extension has had on our community, but I will leave you with this. If we continue to cut funding that invests in the lives of others, how can we expect this up-and-coming generation to succeed, overcome, or push through adversity and difficulties? Because we are telling them that they don't matter by cutting these types of funding. It truly takes a village, and I want MSU Extension as part of my village. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello.
Good afternoon.
Just want to wake everybody up. I know you guys are hungry. It's getting late. It's time to go. My name is Darlene Seifert. I am the Pantry Coordinator at St. Pauli Tarsus Catholic Church. And I love hearing all the stories.
Your address, please.
41300 Romeo Plank Road, Clinton Township. Sure. I love hearing stories how MSU Extension is impacting our children. But we started working with them as a pantry to impact our clientele, which are our age group or our adult children who are having families of their own, and they're financially struggling. We have been providing food to these people for about 30 years, but we've got repeaters, repeat clients. We weren't having a big turnover. We're just, we're building. We have more and more clients, more and more mouths to feed. And our church was kind of concerned with, what is the problem? What can we do so that people don't need our services anymore? So I heard about MSU Extension. So I called them up, and I said, how can we partner together? Do you have any programs where we could send our pantry clients to learn about financial empowerment? And they said, as a matter of fact, we do, and it's free. But all these free programs are poorly attended. Why are they poorly attended? Because they don't have to go to it. So here we are, running our food pantry. People are telling us, we need food because we can't financially manage. And we're like, well, geez, we have a free program that could help you learn how to financially manage. Will you go? And they're like, well, not if I don't have to. And I thought, well, what if I don't have to give you food if you don't have to go learn how to support your and your family and actually learn a new way of thinking? So MSU Extension said, I'll tell you what, we'll give you two days a week. You can start scheduling appointments, and we'll keep it just for your pantry. And I have with me today, we have booked them until December 21st. So if a pantry client comes in for food, and we need to send them to MSU Extension for one-on-one financial empowerment, they can't get in until December 21st. We also called up the media, CNG News, and we said, hey, we've got this great partnership with our pantry and MSU Extension. Would you do a story? Because right now, for the past four months of us working with them, I have three families who have sent us success stories that they no longer need our pantry. And our pantry's been open for 30 years, and I didn't even have one success story. So this is really beneficial. It's a great program. It's free to the community, and it's not a class. People think, oh, you need to hear how to manage your budget, so you have to go to a class. And I'm going to tell you all the same thing because you're all in the same boat. What they do is they say, what is your financial, you know, situation? What's your financial spending? And how can we change your thinking and have you see that if you change a few things with your spending, you might have some extra money? And in fact, we could help you start planning for a future. And the clients that tell us they won't go, who kind of have forced themselves to go, they're making second and third appointments. And we are just blessed to have this program available to us. We have meetings with other community resources out in Macomb County on a regular basis. We've told them about MSU Extension. We've shared with them our success stories, and now other pantries are jumping on board. St. Thackla's is joining up with MSU Extension. We have a meeting next Thursday. The media has not yet come out with their news article about us and MSU Extension. They are asking the public to help fund the MSU program for the financial empowerment. This article has yet to hit the streets. So when I heard that you guys are thinking about, it's coming up in the budget where there might not be money for this program, I'm telling you to wait! Because the impact that it's about to make on our community and the lives it's about to change, and the adults, who then the adults empower their children, and then working with the 4-H programs, getting the children in that, there's nothing like this. And free is great to offer this to the public who could otherwise not pay for these classes. So you know what? I think you need to vote yes on this. I can leave you all of my success papers, my appointments that are set up, anything you need to get you to positively vote to keep this open. So what do you want? Because I got it. I mean, this is awesome, people. We need to keep this going.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if we can direct the people coming up to address this body as opposed to everybody else, I think I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Hello.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mr. Smith, Board. Really appreciate the time that you're taking out for all of us.
Get your name and address, please, sir.
My name is Art David. I'm also St. Pauli Tarsus volunteer. And I just want to let you know that the MSU program needs to be continued. It's an amazing program, like Darlene said. I'm not going to repeat what she said. I'm going to elaborate a little bit on the clients themselves. Truly feel that the MSU program is God-sent. It truly is. It's been changing lives like you can't believe. We talk to people. We have a program. We don't just give them food. We talk to these people one-on-one. We have a mentoring program right there at our church where we just sit and we meet and greet with them. We hear their stories. We cry and we pray with them. We understand the poor and needing, our community needs help. And trust me, they need help. They don't know how to direct their lives. They have never had any counseling. They've never had any encouragement or guidance and taught how to be able to budget their money, how to handle their finances, how to even parent for that sake. There's a lot of people who are crippled, maimed. They have all kinds of physical disabilities, mentally, physically. But at the same time, they come to our pantries because they're in need of food, which that's the only thing they think they need. They don't have any dignity. They humble themselves to come in here. They feel they're not worthy of anything else. So what we do is we talk to them. We let them know that we're there with them. We're walking with them through life. We are children of God, working together. And they feel that love and that kindness and generosity, and they feel that it is important. So we encourage them to go to the MSU program as for one thing and one thing only, to lift their lives, to give them hope, and they truly feel they have hope with us. Because when we come back from that MSU program, they say, you know what? That lady, Nancy, is a saint. She is truly an angel from God because I tell you what, she's changed my life. 95% of the people we have at our pantry that get food go to MSU. It's not just once in a while. They all go to MSU. 50% of them come back with some great stories. We've just now been getting letters. It's only been happening the last six months. The ball's just now rolling. I can't imagine it stopping. If it ever did, I don't know what we'd be able to do with these people because we're now seeing success we've never seen before. It's so important for this program to continue. The financial empowerment is incredible. I can tell you, they learned all kinds of tips. Not only their finances and budgeting, how to save on insurance, how to save on utilities, how to be able to save money on their grocery bills, how to save money on making their own products rather than buying them. I mean, there's all kinds of tips she has, and they come back, they feel like... I can't imagine what we could do without MSU. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, county commissioners. My name is Kenneth D. Cook, 80575 Holmes Road, Armada Township, 48005. I have a farm operation in Macomb Township on Twenty-three Mile, also a retail market called Boikus. Other issue with MSU Extension, about five, six years ago, I had an issue in my tomato fields, something I'd never seen before. Got on the phone, called MSU Extension, "Come out here, I need help." Next day, they were out. Took some tests, samples, two days later, had the results. It wasn't good news. I had a unique virus, tobacco mosaic virus. The good news was, they prescribed a way for me to contain it, to keep it from spreading and saving the rest of the crop. Now, some of yous might think, "Macomb Township, small farm market, that's just Macomb Township residents affected." No, I get customers from Roseville, St. Clair Shores, Warren, and Shelby Township. Not only that, I'm not alone in the vegetable industry here in Macomb Township. There's a number of other farm operators, Van Steen Kistes, Rootage, Woollock, and many others. And we don't have our own small farm markets all, we supply. At one time, it was Pete and Frank's, Nino Savagio's two locations, Vincent Joe's two locations, Randazzo's, all of those. So it greatly affects the quality of life here in Macomb County when we have it in season. And there, from a business standpoint, and this was about ten, fifteen years ago, the ag industry in Macomb was over forty million dollars, which is probably higher yet, drastically affects quick response to issues and problems. And there's where we need to keep MSU Extension nearby. Because if I had to wait two weeks, take samples, set it up to Lansing, and wait for testing and that to come back, I had more damage and lost more of my crop. Plus, it's also the effects of other issues that come up. I am also on Armada Township Planning Commission, I'm currently vice chair. I've been through Citizens Planner, which MSU Extension puts on. Learned quite a bit, but most importantly, some new colleagues who get on the board, go through it, and it's their first taste of politics in dealing with the public and dealing with land issues. Being, we're talking about, I'm talking about land issues, some of yous were on the board way back when Nancy White and John Hurtel were county chairpersons. And it was an initiative pushed by the northern residents to see about our disappearing farmland. Through that experience, and also with the help of MSU Extension, five townships came to an agreement to work on a land issue, which was the first in the state of Michigan. Through that, and the help from the county's planning department, forming that union, Macomb County got, I think it was two or three NACO awards for it, for multi-jurisdictions entities working together. And some of yous got some experience of how hard it is sometimes to get municipalities to work together and agree, but this was accomplished. So again, MSU Extension covers a lot of areas. You heard from one side, I'm coming from the other, and I strongly encourage you to keep it in its budget, because it's a business factor and also for the children and other people that you heard about. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name is Diane Banks, I live at 35617 Addison Drive in New Baltimore. I'm actually here wearing several hats this afternoon. I'm here representing Leadership Macomb, I am the program director for Leadership Macomb. We have two programs, and we have our, some of our high school participants here, and we also have about ten of our very dedicated core program participants here at today's meeting. It just so happened that this agenda item came up, and I wanted to speak on behalf of Leadership Macomb for MSU, for, sorry, MSU Extension has been a partner of ours for the last twenty years. If you're not familiar, Leadership Macomb is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization. We've been around since 1996. We've had about eight hundred graduates between our core program and our junior program. And MSU has been involved since the beginning. They are one of our many partners that we rely on for our program. We partner with many departments from the county, including the commissioners, and they actually help design our curriculum and facilitate some of our program days. One of our program days for both our core program and our junior program is our environment day. So we've taken our students and our adult participants to the nature center at Lake St. Clair Metro Park. They help facilitate a personality test called Real Colors for both of our programs. MSU Extension also facilitates a financial literacy exercise for our students in addition to mental health first aid. So we rely on them heavily throughout our program. We've also been fortunate to have representation on our board from MSU since we began in 1996. That's, I guess, all I wanted to say, I just wanted to make sure Leadership Macomb represented, made sure that you knew that MSU helped us out with our program. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Board. My name is Thomas Barnes, I live at 291 Jones Street in Mount Clemens, Michigan. And I really wish, after seeing everyone come up here and talk, that I had this really well-worded speech that I typed out or brought on my phone, but I can just tell you what, in my experiences with MSUE in the past few years. I have been running an after-school work program with the Macomb Bailey since I was nineteen years old. I saw an issue in our community where kids, kids that came from poor households didn't have an opportunity to make money. They didn't outreach to their teachers and counselors and schools. So I have been fighting on the ground level with kids in our community, kids from New Haven all the way to Eight Mile and Van Dyke, trying to bring in programming to help the students of our community. As we all know, kids become adults. Every one of you sitting board members were at one time a child. I live in a city who has a struggling school district and no recreation department. This program is vitally imperative to the health and well-being of the students of the city of Mount Clemens. In my experiences with MSUE, we have done a myriad of different projects together. Kathy Jamison was one of the very first people that I met at MSUE. Before even getting to know me, Kathy arranged a fifty-person bowling fundraiser for our group to buy new clothes for the kids in our program. This was, this was just off of meeting me. They came out, we did a Black History Month essay contest. The ladies from MSUE came out and volunteered their time to judge our contest on a Saturday. How many people do you get to come to work for free on a Saturday? Not very many, right? In addition to that, they brought in a program called Mad City Money. This was the most powerful thing that I've seen in my twenty years of doing, of working with kids. The program is basically like the game of life. Everybody here remembers the board game, the game of life as a child, right? You get a job, you go around, you try to make your life, right? Well, the kids come in and they give them a packet, and in that packet, you have a job. You could be anywhere from a fast-food worker to an electrical worker to a county commissioner. I mean, there's so many different jobs, and it gives you the median income. So now the kids have to go around to each individual station, there's a car lot, then you got to buy a house, then if you got a child, you got to provide childcare, and you go around this room. We ran this program, and I thought the day was going smooth, right? Everything was great. I had two kids whose packet allowed them to be a fast-food worker, where they made nine hundred dollars a month, and they had two children. I looked in the other room of the library, and my wife said, "We're going to need you in here for a moment, Tommy." So I go in there, and the kids are in there crying. And I couldn't, I couldn't understand, like, this is such a fun day, like, I'm having fun, we're going around, you know, the kids got teddy bears they're carrying as their kids, and I could not figure out why these children were crying. The kids got to identify with who their parents were. One girl's mother worked at Taco Bell, the other boy's mother worked at Sonic. These kids have been complaining about their parents and, you know, not having the things that they felt like they deserved, and this program made it real for them. They were able to identify with their home life in a real-world way. These are the services that MSUE provides. I have been able to talk a group of my friends and my own wife into volunteering their time to start a new 4-H program in East Point and another one here in Mount Clemens, so that we can expand the outreach of what it is that MSUE and the 4-H program does. You may be looking at it as a financial issue. And as a father of four, and someone who has forty kids in my program that I work with every day, I can understand that. But I'm telling you as a citizen of your county and of your community, these are the same kids that if we keep cutting funding to their programming, are going to go down a very bad path. And you or I may be in harm's way if we do not help our own children. It is vitally important that we keep this program intact. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Thank you for allowing me to do this today. My name is Regina Newlin, and I live at 55810 Woodridge Drive in Shelby Township. I also am an advanced master gardener, beginning in the year 2010. I have done twelve hundred thirty-four hours of volunteering, I have one hundred ninety-four continuing education hours from the master gardener program, and I have traveled eight thousand one hundred fifty-six miles in volunteering. Through my education in the master gardener program, my husband, fellow master gardeners, and I have learned how to restore fruit trees, and we've been volunteering to help Macomb County and its citizens throughout the years by working on two projects that I feel are very important. We've been working on a restoration project of a thirty-year-old neglected apple orchard in Washington Township, beginning with clearing a path to the orchard, finding hidden apple trees, clearing trees, shrubs, vines, herbaceous perennial wildflowers and weeds surrounding the hidden apple trees. In 2010, this resulted in my husband and I being able to prune four apple trees in the winter. Currently, we're pruning fifty-five apple trees annually. Since 2010, we've harvested in total two thousand two hundred ninety-one pounds of apples, all of which were donated to local food banks such as Samaritan House and the Agape Center to feed hungry people in Macomb County. When the apples were delivered, the people at the food banks were so excited to have apples there, they said, "Nobody ever brings them apples." And this is in an area that's quite close to several orchards. They do not get apples donated for hungry people for free. The project included increasing the numbers of trained certified Macomb County master gardeners who have helped us locate, clear, and prune the fifty-five trees yearly, instead of the four we started with, to meet our goal of feeding the hungry in Macomb County. In addition, we've been able to provide hands-on instruction on fruit tree restoration and pruning to interested members of the Macomb, Oakland, and Wayne County communities, including teaching a visitor from the Greening of Detroit prop, project. In addition, we've been working on another project, a growing green garden project right here in Mount Clemens, surrounding St. Mary's School, and the project goals include: fulfilling the school's mission statement of preparing students for higher learning and becoming more productive leaders in society, preparing students for environmental challenges they'll meet as future leaders, providing students with a hands-on opportunity to increase biodiversity of wildlife in school gardens in the Mount Clemens community, to observe and learn about ecosystems, secure the future of native plants and wildlife, provide an educational resource where the school, family, and local citizens can learn about the value, function, and beauty of native plants, to beautify the local community and inspire citizens and businesses to consider incorporating native plants in their landscapes. In the summer of 2017, the project took third place in the state of Michigan Best Master Gardener Project, which is a significant accomplishment for a small school in Macomb County. Many, many people, when I garden at the school, when fellow master gardeners are out there gardening, all of the people walking by, and there are many people who walk by that school in Mount Clemens, all have positive, good things to say and questions to ask about the plants in the garden. The plants are all labeled with lots of information about them, so it is a resource for people in addition to just being a pretty garden. The past year, the school garden was certified as a National Wildlife Federation schoolyard habitat and a pollinator garden. The most important thing I would like you to know is that the Macomb County Master Gardener Program is important to Macomb County. It's making many good things happen here, and I only gave you two examples of what I think are good things happening. But it's not just good for the volunteers who take the classes, but for the citizens that live in the county. The two projects I mentioned are examples of good things happening as a result of the Michigan State University program. Providing citizens with food to feed those that are hungry and providing citizens with an urban garden, that's a wildlife habitat and pollinator garden, where citizens can learn the importance of preserving the plants and the wildlife that we are losing at a rapid rate and are dependent on for our livelihood. The master gardener program and its volunteers are very important to the sustainability of all the people in Macomb County and should not be cut. Our future depends on it.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Hannah Stevens, 62,000 Shaner Road in Washington Township. Good afternoon, all. I'm here as a retiree of MSU Extension. I worked as an extension agricultural educator for thirty years. I retired six and a half years ago. I haven't heard testimonials like this for a long time. I'm really, I'm really, I'm really proud of MSU Extension. I'm on the leadership council at this point. My job when I, in my thirty-year career, was to convey research-based knowledge to help anyone involved in the farm and food system to make decisions based on that information. This included the production of high-marketable yields of crops, such as what we consider agronomic crops, corn, soybeans, wheat, and also the crops that Macomb County is famous for, vegetables, fruit, nursery, ornamental crops, bedding plants, which really emerged strongly just before I got there and continue to be strong. And then, as I thought about it, there's honey, there's cider, both soft and hard, and MSU was involved, deeply involved in helping the hard cider industry, maple syrup and all those other things that we're looking at right now and enjoying. There's also craft beer. That took off just, just as I was retiring, and MSU has done research into fermentation and to hops production, not so much of that in Macomb County, but the craft beer industry is something that MSU contributed to. The focus was not just on production, it was on what consumers want and how to get, get it to them. Essentially, a big part of what they want to support is local farmers, as Ken D. Cook mentioned, have safe food and kind environmental practices. I also worked with landscape businesses. Many people, if not most people, that I know and see have a landscape business that takes care of their, their lawns and their gardens and their landscapes. I'm impressed with how many of those businesses are successful, and we were, you know, always working with them closely to get information to them, to make sure they had their pesticide knowledge that they needed and their certification and so on. We've heard a lot about gardening. It's not, it's not frivolous. Here are the facts about some, about landscapes that you probably know. We know that a beautiful landscape enhances the value of a home. We know that if trees are to be healthy, they need to be selected carefully, they need to be planted properly, they need to be maintained properly, for a number of different reasons. One is so that gardeners don't overuse pesticides for problems that pesticides aren't going to solve. The other is that, another one is that they don't, so trees aren't planted in the wrong place and get in, under the sidewalks and into the septic system and fall on your house and drop fruit, you know, fruit, ugly fruit all over your, your lawns. And we know, the last lesson I learned before I left, or one that was undergoing, was we need to be aware that diverse species need to be planted as street trees and in subdivisions and so on, so we don't... We know that a beautiful landscape enhances the value of a home. We know that if trees are to be healthy, they need to be selected carefully, they need to be planted properly, they need to be maintained properly for a number of different reasons. One is so that gardeners don't overuse pesticides for problems that pesticides aren't going to solve. The other is that, another one is that they don't, so trees aren't planted in the wrong place and get in, under the sidewalks and into the septic system and fall on your house and drop fruit, you know, fruit, ugly fruit all over your, your lawns. And we know, the last lesson I learned before I left, or one that was undergoing, was we need to be aware that diverse species need to be planted as street trees and in subdivisions and so on, so we don't lose all of our trees when the next pest problem hits, as we did with the American chestnut, the American elm, and our ash trees and so on. This is, this is non-bias knowledge, research-based information, and it deepens as time goes on. It needs to be repeated often, and for the last hundred years, Extension has been doing that job in Macomb County. It's the most dependable place to deliver that kind of information from, in my thought. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
How do you do? My name is Kiri Mead. I'm the deputy Garrison manager at the Detroit Arsenal. I'm a resident of Wayne County, but I wanted to speak to you a little bit as a parent of the services of Army Community Service and the Army Child and Youth Services Program.
Sorry, ma'am, can you give us your address too, please?
Sure. I live at 1575 Ford Court in Gross Point Woods. I work at 6501 East Eleven Mile Road in Warren, Michigan.
One's plenty.
Okay. Well, I'm trying to show you my, my Macomb County love.
Thanks.
Excellent. I just wanted to talk a little bit as a, a parent of a child who uses 4-H through the Army programs and remind everybody that 4-H supports the military. And the Macomb County 4-H in particular has had a global impact on military children around the world, and the way that they've done that is the 4-H has supported the gardening program at the Detroit Arsenal. So 4-H works in conjunction with our children and our staff to put up gardens where they produce their own vegetables, fruits, and flowers, and they've now taken that on the road and replicated that at, at least twenty other installations across the world. And that's all started with your Macomb County 4-H. I just wanted to share that bit of information.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Nancy Motrick. I live at 39678 Cove in Harrison Township. Do you need to do some exercise here to? Okay. I just think we need one more little plug for the Great Lakes Education Program, which I've been a volunteer since 2004, and that's in spring and in the fall. You know, it's not just a boat ride. There's, it's so wonderful to see the excitement of kids, some of them who've never been on a boat before or even on the, or been in the area, but on their faces, and they're excited to go through all the stations, because we have different stations that teach them different things. And at the end, we compile all of that, as one of the gentlemen talked about. But, you know, there's students all over Macomb County that have the opportunity to foster interest, understanding, and the importance of preserving our waterways, and it's firsthand, it's hands-on to see the plankton and know that that's part of the, the food chain and what's on the bottom of the river and on the bottom of the lake and those, look at those little critters, that they're, all these are important for water quality. And even, and even the fish, too, that, to know that, well, this little one eats this and this and this and this, and then we get the perch and all that, and they go, "Oh, wow, that's cool." Anyway, I've enjoyed working with the children and seeing the results of it, and every year, a lot of those teachers keep bringing those, bringing their children back, so you know that it's, it's working. And please reconsider your ideas about cutting these programs, because they are worthwhile as you can hear with all these other people. So, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Antoinette Heinman. I live at 32519 North River Road in Harrison Township. I'm also a volunteer for the Great Lakes Education Program. I was, I am a retired teacher from the Warren Woods Public Schools, and for the past ten years, I have been a volunteer with GLAP. And as you know, we work mainly with elementary students in the spring and fall, and even on days like today, when it's raining and pouring out, and sometimes the temperature is even a lot colder than it is today, we're out there on the boat working with the kids. We do it because we love kids and we want to give them the best that we can give them, because they are our future. One of the things that Nancy mentioned that I, I will reiterate is that we are surprised that many of these students have never been on a boat before or never even been to Lake St. Clair or the Clinton River or any of the other rivers and waterways in Macomb County, even though they live a very short distance away. And so this program, we hope to teach them about the Great Lakes and water quality and the impact that we as humans have, have on the water quality of our Great Lakes. We find that students learn a lot, they love the program, the teachers are grateful and appreciate what we do, and we are very happy to work with these students, because again, they are our future. So we ask that you please continue supporting the MSU Extension so that we can continue with our program. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Hi. Mark Ososki, 31448 San Juan, Harrison Township, Michigan. I'm a retired middle school and math-science teacher. I've been volunteering with the GLAP and Nancy and Tony for five years now. I'm not gonna cover the things that they covered about how great the wa, the boat ride and everything is, but just want to point out some of the ignorance of the children before they show up, and I'm sure that we have some people that are here that don't know some of the things about the Great Lakes. Some of the questions we get when they first get on the boat is, "Is the water salty? Are there sharks in this water?" You know, and things, things like that. The water's brown. Is it dirty? Is it safe to swim in? And then I point out to them, "We drink this water. Mount Clemens has an imp, I'm sorry, a couple miles down the road, and they take the water right out of the lake and you're drinking that." Oh, they can't believe it. We drink this water. Well, I'm here to tell you, these kids are our future, and they're the generation that has to fix the problems that still exist in the Great Lakes. We're still dumping sewage down the wa, down the river that we drink. Our generation hasn't fixed it, the next generation must do that, and if we don't educate them, they're not gonna be able to do it, and it's just gonna get worse. So this program is very important.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Vern Coleman. I live at 74675 Claus Road in Richmond Township. I'm also a Richmond Township trustee. Just to put a different angle on this, MSU Extension has helped the township out in several ways. Just in the last year, they conducted a seminar for us to educate our residents about the marijuana issue that's facing us today, both the medical and the recreational coming up for the vote next week. And also, they helped us with the, they did a seminar on helping our, protecting our wells, which is an issue up in the northern part of the county, and our seepage fields up there. They did an educational program with that, and they worked with the Board of Health on that. So I think they worked with other municipalities and other government agencies to provide these programs. And also, I'm also a member that Kendi took, talked earlier about the PDR program, which is Purchase of Development Rights and Preserving of Farmland. A few years ago, the MSU Extension, along with the Planning and Economic Development Program, helped us secure a $270,000 grant from the state, and without the MSU Extension, we would have never been able to do that. And with that, we purchased two pieces of property in northern Macomb County that is now in, in, saved for farmland in perpetuity, and that program is still going, going on. And I think the MSU Extension, as you can see here today, to me, is a perfect example of our tax money coming back and helping the community, and I think it helps all facets, whether it's low-income, any demographics of any kind. So I help you, I hope you reconsider your budget on the MSU Extension. Thank you.
Thank you. See anybody else for public comment? Stand up, ma'am, you're, you're next. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name is Linda Gawinski. My address is 36064 Lucerne, Clinton Township. I had this nice speech already, and after hearing everyone else commenting and covering everything that was in mine, and I was wowed, because I'm part of the Great Lakes Education Program, that's what I volunteer for. We do wonderful work, I think so. I've been doing it over ten years now. I wouldn't keep doing it if I didn't think it was worthwhile, but that's been said. All I can say is how it's changed my life. Learning everything I did, just being a volunteer, changed the way I do things at home, how I, I am a steward now of the Great Lakes. I teach that to my family. I show them things that they have all had to learn, all my little lessons that I teach the children, because I practiced on them. So everyone got educated, and we practice it at home. But I was wowed by hearing, that's my little world with the MSUE. They have so many outreaches, I had no idea, listening to all these people, what they had to say about it. It was amazing to me, and, and I can't, can't even fathom this county working as it is, making better citizens in the county without it. I think that's, I mean, better citizens helps everything. It helps with crime, it helps with, at, at education, it helps with, I just, you could go on and on, and you all know what I mean. You know, you're, you're not dumb people. It's, it's, it's so vital for our community, and I'm seeing that more and more. I just thought, oh, the Great Lakes Education Program, that's, that's worth fighting for, but man, there's much more than that to worth, with fighting for through this, their programs. To just cut it, you're doing a disservice not only to the community, but to yourselves, because it's affecting you as well, being part of the community. So please, please reconsider dropping it. Keep it on, keep it on. This is so important, and seeing it in the lives of the, the kids that came up and gave their testimony, right there should, should be enough to convince you to keep it on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Marilyn Rodzinski. I live at 36227 Lamarra Drive, Sterling Heights, Michigan. I, too, am very committed and have been very involved in the MSU Extension service. Some, some of you know me. I've worked for forty years in this county, all of that time with MSU Extension. Prior to my work extension, I never knew anything about them, but as I worked for them, I totally believe in their mission of bringing practical application to the citizens of the community, taking the extension network of the United States and its territories and developing answers to problems that we face on an ongoing basis. Our programs change, there's the standby, but our programs change based on need. Most of you or many of you might have recalled the Gypsy Moth Program. It was gone, or made it came and it hit, coming across the United States. It hit us, we dealt with it in Extension. It has, cycle has gone down, but guess what? It's coming back, I'm understanding. When we provide educational in programming, we always did it with the thought of bettering the community, bettering the individual to let the individual have that information to carry on what they do. And we did it with partners, as many of the people alluded to today, our partnerships with governments, our partnerships with youth, youth and families, and it's those relationships and those partnerships that continue on and on. I, sitting here, I have not been involved in Extension in over ten years, nine years, excuse me. I've had other challenges, but I am very proud of all of the programs that have continued, and they talk about all of the contributions they make to the county. One of your colleagues said, "They have never seen so, for so little, you get so much." I know when I was presenting programs to you, it was like a three-to-one ratio in terms of the times we spent with our, with our dollars or the county dollars by the time we brought other dollars into the community and raised programs to meet those needs. I would hope that you would reconsider and not take funding away from MSU Extension. As a citizen and as an ex-employee, I do believe that you would be losing a tremendous amount of goodwill, of basic skill. Our challenges may not be as much economic today, but look at the violence that we have and what are we facing it with. We need people who have skills in communication and in supporting themselves in whatever. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else for public comment? Anyone else for public comment? Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Judy Marchionne, 14717 North Park Drive in Shelby Township. And I just want to add my name to the list of my volunteer friends, all from the GLAP Program. I've been involved in master gardeners, where I took my whole class of master gardener. I worked in a nursing home. We built a pond, we started a garden with our people. We changed the lives of those people in the nursing home. Now I'm working mostly with water conservation, where I go into, into schools with a little box of tricks, where I show them a jar, a peanut butter jar with water in it, and I swirl it around and I say, "This water that's in here, you're never gonna get anymore. It's held to our earth by gravity. This could be George Washington's bathwater." And don't you know that they're gonna go home tonight and say, "Mom, you're drinking George Washington's bathwater there in your tea." Those are the kind of things that we bring right into their lives. We take them out on a boat that otherwise is a party boat for adults on the Clinton River. We change that boat into a classroom, and we bring exciting programs. We just recently have a new computer, that we have this computer screen, and we take those things that we could never see before, because they were microscopic. We put them under the, the microscope, and here is zooplankton, you know, the size of Cleveland on your screen. Kids can actually see it. Those are the kind of programs that are so vitally important, and I am so proud of the people that work on this. I don't even know how many hours, who keeps track? I, I don't, but I am impressed by my colleagues, and I hope that you will continue this program. Thank you, I just wanted to say that.
Thank you. Any other people for public comment? Anybody else for public comment? Third and final ti, couldn't go on my first call. Thank you. Good afternoon.
My name is Lisa Bryan. I was born and raised at 755 Clinton River Drive in here in the city of Mount Clemens. I'm forty-nine. Back then, we didn't have much as kids, as far as programs, to consider of going to. The city of Warren, they have a civic center, they have all types of activities for kids. Here in Mount Clemens, I never had that opportunity to have any of those programs as a child, being raised and born here in Macomb County. I think if you take these programs away, the crime rate and everything else is all going to be the same as it has been. It's, nothing is gonna change. But the problem is that the federal government states that a family of three can survive off of $20,000 a year in today's society. Can any of you? You understand? Like, nobody cannot afford to put and pay for their children to go into any type of programs. So if you're offering all these free programs, why would you take this away? Where, where else are these kids gonna go? Their parents can't afford to place them into other programs, because they don't have the funding or the money. They are barely making it out here. I don't know if any of you guys know what it's like to be poor and to eat maybe a slice of toast for your dinner, but we got programs to offer and to help feed these needy people. We need to keep it here. It does not need to go away. Ask the government for some change. They got money. You know what I've seen that changed here in Macomb County since I've been here? We got this new building. We got this new building, we got this new garage, we redid the old county building, we built the new county building, but you know what we all had as a child, and it's still the only thing that we have here? The YMCA. Do you know what they charge to send your child to that? A lot of money that a lot of parents do not have. Minimum wage, still $7.50 an hour. Really? Who can live off of that? I make $12 an hour caring for the elderly people. I barely survive. I don't have $200, $300 a month to place my child anywhere in a program for her to get additional education, additional activities. Who has that funding here? So why would you take this away? It's ludicrous. I mean, where are these kids going to go? They are our future. Hopefully, they'll be sitting in your seat one day, but if we take it away from them, then they won't have your seat. Who will have it? You got to retire eventually. All of you guys do. What are we going to do? You know, can't afford college. Do you know what it costs us for a college student to go to school today? I mean, back 30 years ago, I'm 49, it was like $15,000. Now it's like $100,000. The statistic states that it costs us $100,000 in today's society to raise a child. You know, who makes $100,000 a year? I know I don't. I know me and my husband's income combined together don't. So what are we going to do for these children in the future? Are we going to take it away? Take all the programs away? We've been cutting funding programs all the time, but it's always got to do with our children. How about cutting other fundings in other places that don't affect our children anymore? How come we can't cut those? Why does it always have to be the program for our kids? So that's all I have to say. So I hope you guys keep the program.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Anybody else on public comment? Anybody else on public comment? Third and final time, seeing no one else on public comment, we're going to close public comment. Just a point of information, there's been no movement or action on cutting anything at this point, just so you know. We're going to move to item number five, correspondence. We have A through G, which were all correspondence emailed to us through the-
I didn't. Not yet.
This, there's correspondence, I'd like a motion to, to receive and file, A through G, by Commissioner Majek, supported by Commissioner Leonetti. Please vote.
And the correspondence is relative to the-
The correspondence is relative to the MSU Extension emails received. Yes.
I still vote yes.
All right, motion passes. I'm going to need a motion to close the public hearing. Motion by Commissioner Drolat, supported by Commissioner Romano. Great. All right, motion passes, meeting, I need a motion to adjourn. Commissioner, Commissioner Dujie, supported by Commissioner Drolat.
I vote no.
All right. The other meeting will be at 10 minutes. Motion passes, meeting adjourned. Full board will be in 10 minutes.